Welcome to the October 16th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. It's good to see everyone and Councilmember Eddie Smotherman has our prayer and our pledge.
Please file with me. Lord, thank you for this day, thank you for the many blessings. Thank you for everything that you do for our city and all that we receive worth we are truly thankful for. Be with us as we go through this meeting tonight and hope that we make decisions that would be appropriate in your sight and beneficial to our city. For these things we say thank you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have several things going on this month and wanted to quickly point out two. Many of us are wearing pink tonight for breast cancer awareness and one of us regrettably had a dance last night in a dancing competition for breast cancer awareness and no one was videoing that, so it was a lot of fun though. Also, City Hall is lit up purple this week or this month from the 16th through the 31st for National Alzheimer's Month and there's a walk, I forget what the date is, Mr. Lyons, but I think it's this Friday, I believe. And with that, also we had a meeting yesterday, the governor was at the Chamber of Commerce and was also celebrating the grand opening of MTSU's 275,000 square foot science facility. Mr. Lyons, you may have some more you want to say on that?
Certainly, the new science building at MTSU really does bring it into state of the art. MTSU is confident that this will bring the best and brightest high school students wanting to get degrees in those science fields to Middle Tennessee, certainly becomes a great resource. Those students graduate at MTSU and helps us recruit jobs, so certainly a very proud moment in the state of Tennessee. Many local partners, including the city council, help contribute toward the funding of that project, so exciting day for our university.
And Councilman Washington was with us yesterday and the governor was here talking about the TN achieves, the Tennessee Promise, and just some statistics that 32% of Rutherford County have a post-secondary education and for economic development, for workforce development, something that they're really wanting to push and that's where we have the TN achieves. Here's the Tennessee College Guide, but at www.tnachieves.org, we're needing mentors for people to sign up to mentor college students who will be going into a technical school or a two-year institution. And right now, I forget the exact number, but they're hoping in Rutherford County that we'll have one mentor per five students. It takes 12 hours a year, one hour a month, to be able to text students and keep up with what they're doing, so please take the time to help not only the state but Rutherford County in mentoring. With that, I'll turn the mic over to Shannon Logan.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Tonight, we're proud to once again recognize some outstanding staff members here at the city of Murfreesboro. As you know, we are very fortunate with the talent that we have here that work for our city and recently, some of our communications staff members won national awards for their outstanding work here. And you may have seen our new entry that they put together tonight and it's a privilege all the time for all the work that we get to do with our communications department, their fun group. And if you haven't had a chance to come and visit with them, come and see some of the great technology they have and the efforts that they put into producing the programming that they put on Channel 3 for us and on our website and on Facebook and on Twitter. Please come down and visit with them, they'd love to show you around if you haven't had an opportunity to do that. But at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Alan Bozeman, who's the Communications Department head, to come up and talk about the awards that they won and also to talk about his staff members a little bit. And then, Mayor, if you could come down after that and you and Alan can present those awards to our staff members that we won from NTOA, those are the awards that we won, and that's the National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors. So with that, if Mr. Alan Bozeman would come to the podium, we'll go ahead and get our great wonderful staff recognized.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. Excited and proud to be here tonight to be able to recognize some staff members out of the Communications Department. Since 1995, the department has been competing on a national level for government television programming awards, competition that's presented by the National Association of Telecommunication Officers and Advisors. And every year since then, they've won some kind of awards and again this year, we've been able to compete and win awards as well. This year, there were over 64 different categories and over 720 entries from local governments all over the country in this competition. We competed head-to-head against cities like Tacoma, Washington, Tampa Bay, Florida, Allen, Texas. And this year, we received an honorable mention for the Communications Department use of social media and also honorable mention award for a children's program Adventures in Murfreesboro. And also, if Michael Neville's going to come up here, he received an award, a third-place award for a documentary on the Stones River National Battlefield. And also, John Paget, he won a first-place award for a production he did on the promotional video on the Discovery Center here in town. Congratulations, guys. If you all have anything you'd like to say or...
I gotta go run cameras.
Thank you.
Great job, guys.
Thank you.
Good job.
Great job.
I'm going to stay down and have two special presentations. You're going to wonder why we're doing this in October, but Susan, if you'd come up. Susan heads up a group of talented artists that we have in Murfreesboro and they do a lot of things throughout our community, so we wanted to go ahead and do this a little early in October for a week that's in November, so everyone will know what's coming up. And I think that's one of the things as a city council that we strive to do is let the residents know what's happening in their city. So whereas, the city of Murfreesboro believes in the enduring value of handmade craft and celebrate the artists and craftspeople who create them, and whereas, these crafts and craftspeople are an integral part of the economic base of Murfreesboro and contribute to its cultural tourism, whereas, the craft heritage of the Middle Tennessee region traces back to the earliest settlers of the area who created handmade items to use in daily life, and whereas, the Middle Tennessee region is now home to hundreds of artists and craftspeople, whereas, the city of Murfreesboro believes that honoring craft, craft artisans and cultural traditions in our region preserves and enriches community life. So therefore, and we're going to do this beforehand, I Shane McFarlane, Mayor of the city of Murfreesboro, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim November 16th through the 22nd of November as Murfreesboro Craft Week to culminate locally with the 21st Annual Art Studio Tour, the weekend before Thanksgiving, November 20th and 21st, 2014, and we ask all citizens and visitors to commend its observance and take part in this celebration. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. And council members, tonight is a special night. It's not often that we get to honor someone who has done so much in the community and someone that we get to look that is a true leader. And so, would ask the Huddleston family if y'all would come up. I don't have to give you guys a nod to know who Ms. Huddleston is and what she's done in our community and want to thank Bart Walker for being instrumental in this process, but Ms. Huddleston, it's our honor to present you a proclamation tonight and want to read through this to the entire family. Whereas, Christine Huddleston began a local homeless program almost nearly 25 years ago in Murfreesboro with seven local churches offering their facilities for overnight housing, and whereas, Christine and her late husband Clyde coordinated the program and were the primary source of financial support until the death of her husband. Room-in-the-end was growing dramatically by then and the city of Murfreesboro generously allowed her to use the city building, and whereas, Christine still oversees the fully grown operation and is the director of this nonprofit that was gifted by she and her husband Clyde. She has been invited to celebrate the graduation of a Room-in-the-end alumni each commencement at MTSU over the past 25 years, and whereas Christine helps daily at Room-in-the-end and some of the current volunteers formerly were clients of the program, it made a difference in their lives and they are giving back. Christine helps daily to change lives and has made a difference in the lives of many. So now, therefore, I Shane McFarlane, Mayor of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim October 16th, 2014, is a day to honor Christine Huddleston and urge all citizens to join in honoring her as a great local humanitarian who cares deeply about her entire community, especially those in need. Ms. Huddleston, we thank you for what you've done for Murfreesboro and we also thank you for what you continue to do for the many people in Murfreesboro that have many stories that they would sing your praises. So we want to give this to you, actually, we want to show this to you, but we felt like the best way to honor you is to hang this in Room-in-the-end, so people will be able to see that as soon as they walk in the front door and see what you've done. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not often that we get to do something like that, so thank you again for the Huddleston family and you guys are free to stay or free to go, just whatever you want to do. We'll now move into the consent agenda. You have several items in front of you, if you have any questions.
Shane, Mayor, I would like to pull item A, Section B off the consent agenda so that we can talk about it later.
Okay. Did you get that, Mr. Lyons?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Hearing no other comments, I'd approve, suggest we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarlane.
Aye.
Moving to second readings and consider for passage on second reading and ordinance 1402, amending Appendix C, City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, Employees' Revised Pension Trust Agreement. Before we do that, we've had a few phone calls and Mr. Galwin, is Mr. Galwin here?
He's not.
Can, we had a couple of phone calls from employees asking if we were changing anything in their retirement, if we could get a quick address to that.
The council was presented with this some months ago. We had to send it to the Internal Revenue Service as a restatement and await their approval before we could bring it to you for second and third. So this was presented, this is the same information that was presented and discussed at the council meeting previously. It does not change the benefits that employees get or who is eligible for a benefit. It does restate for a couple of reasons. One is compliance with IRS rules. They changed it at levels that don't affect any city employees because we don't get paid that much. And it also changes it in terms of greater clarity for definition. There were some things that we thought needed to be cleaned up and we summarized those and told you about them and you looked at them before, so this is not a new concept. This is second reading and it's only being brought to you now after this gap in time because we were waiting for the qualification letter from the Internal Revenue Service. We have now received that and so it's giving us authority to go forward, but there should be no employee concern that this is a change like some other cities and states are having to do of a drastic nature. That is not the case. It does not reflect any lack of funding or change in benefits.
How long ago, sorry, how long ago was the first reading? I noticed this was second reading.
The first reading was January 16th of this year.
And the vote was?
Let's see, I don't know that I've got that. I believe it was unanimous. I don't have the minutes, I recall no objection to it. The cover memo that, well, we sent the tracked and the clean version, which is probably for those employees maybe interested, should be available online from the meeting that was held on January 16th earlier this year. It was trying to, the change that was made then, we were trying to deal with long-term disabled employees and clarify that and to give this council the flexibility to decide which forms of compensation would be considered for pension purposes as opposed to having to go back and amend the ordinance each time that there might be a change there. And Mr. Lance, I will be more than pleased to send you the clean and the tracked version that we looked at in January, so you'll have that before third and final.
Yeah, thanks. I didn't have that, but good. There's no other questions, I'll move to...
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarlane.
Aye. Consider for passage on second reading ordinance 14045, amending Chapter 2, Article 5, in sections 21 through 49 and 21 and a half through 15 regarding the golf commission and city golf courses.
Second.
Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Kels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarlane.
Aye. Moving to first readings, consider for passage on first reading, I'm having trouble speaking tonight, guys. Ordinance 14050, repealing the current version of Chapter 21, Article 5 of the Murfreesboro City Code in its entirety and adopting Chapter 21, Article 5 regarding noise control. Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Good evening. I am here on behalf of city staff to present for your consideration and approval ordinance 14050, which would repeal Chapter 21, Article 5 of the Murfreesboro City Code dealing with noise and repeal that chapter in its entire, not the chapter, the article in its entirety and replace it with a new Article 5 entitled Noise Control. We have, this is a highly technical ordinance and we provided council members with a lot of supporting documentation material. It is not my intent to go through that material page by page by page or to go through the ordinance page by page by page, but I would like for the benefit of those in the audience here and those watching on TV to give a brief summary of what this ordinance entails and at the end, I would of course be happy to entertain any questions you might have. By way of background, the city originally adopted the current noise ordinance in 1985 and over the past 20 years, council has approved only a few minor amendments to that ordinance. Some of those amendments have addressed things such as sound generated by construction activity on private property and exemptions for aircraft operated in accordance with federal law and also exempting activities on the MTSU campus from the ordinance's maximum noise levels. There were, really, there've only been two ordinances in the past 29 years that have amended the original ordinance adopted in 1985. The new noise control ordinance being presented to you for approval is similar in intent and scope to the city's existing noise ordinance. This similarity is reflected in the proposed ordinance's Declaration of Findings and Policy, which states that the purpose of the ordinance is to minimize the exposure of citizens to the potential negative physiological and psychological effects of excessive noise, to protect, promote and preserve public health, safety and welfare, and to achieve these goals in a manner that promotes the use, value and enjoyment of property, conduct of business, sleep and repose, and reduces unnecessary and excessive sound in the environment. This declaration of policy closely tracks the purpose and policy statement contained in the current noise ordinance. Changes in technology over the last 30 years in and of themselves warrant reconsideration, however, of how the city achieves these goals. Reconsideration is also warranted in light of legal developments over the same period. The proposed ordinance seeks to account for these changes and therefore represents a significant adjustment to the manner in which noise is regulated within the city. The proposed ordinance has four primary goals. The first is to increase the likelihood that the city's noise regulations would survive a legal challenge by, first, revising or eliminating provisions that might be construed as vague or overbroad by a court, expanding the use of objective standards such as maximum sound level limits, and providing detailed guidance regarding the measurement of sound levels and enforcement activities in general. I could speak to this first goal for a moment. When the city adopted the current noise ordinance almost 30 years ago, the language and nature of its regulations were commonplace among other municipal noise control ordinances. Since that time, however, courts have come to demand more objective standards, increased reliance on the use of sound level measurements, as one example, for enforcement purposes, as opposed to those that rely on predominantly subjective standards such as, and I'm quoting here, excessive unnecessary or unusually loud noise that disturbs or annoys an individual. This ordinance seeks to address the concerns raised by the courts. The second goal of the ordinance is to achieve a reasonable balance between minimizing the effects of noise and promoting economic activity and growth through the utilization of sound level limits for different types of activities. For example, this ordinance, like the city's existing ordinance, sets generally applicable exterior noise limits. The proposed ordinance, however, creates some alternative standards for certain types of activities and certain types of operations. For example, the proposed ordinance creates different sound level limits that apply to construction activities, the use of certain power equipment, tools, and the operation of motor vehicles. Those standards, these alternative standards are consistent with those adopted in other jurisdictions and are consistent with federal and state regulations, but it allows some flexibility in terms of activities that are subject to the exterior noise limits. And also to, I should add that these alternative limits are also, especially with respect to the use of construction and, or construction activities and the use of power tools and equipment, in most land use categories, they are subject to certain time limitations where the individuals are allowed to exceed the generally applicable stand, noise levels only during a certain part of the day. The third goal is to reduce the technical complexity of sound level measurements by replacing the current ordinance's use of octave band sound levels for measuring sound with standards based on A-weighted and C-weighted sound measurements. The analysis of the A-weighted and C-weighted, analysis of sound using A-weighted and C-weighted sound measurements is significantly less complex than those using octave band measurements and the A and C weighted networks are widely recognized as more than sufficient to address most environmental and community noise concerns. Finally, the fourth goal is to clarify the means by which a person can obtain permanent or temporary relief from the city's noise regulations and to establish objective criteria to guide the decision-making process of city boards and officials, especially, specifically the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals in determining whether or not to grant such relief. In closing, I want to emphasize that the proposed ordinance, while aimed at addressing current noise concerns, has also been prepared with an eye to the future. While the geographic boundaries of Murfreesboro might expand to accommodate some of the population and economic growth expected in the city over the next 20 years, much of this growth is likely to occur within current city limits and to involve a fair amount of infill development within the city's core. This increased density of social and economic activity will likely generate noise issues that are more commonly associated with larger cities. With this in mind, the legal department reviewed the current noise regulations of cities, other cities, both large and small, from across the country in developing the regulations submitted for your consideration and approval. Again, I recognize that the ordinance before you deals with some, with a highly technical subject matter and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, and I ask that you approve this ordinance on first reading.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
One other thing, I think there should have been left at your seats tonight, some additional supplemental material regarding the noise ordinance. These, they're simply for explanation purposes only. The most significant one that I would call to your attention is the first one, which is a comparison of sound levels in the proposed ordinance with sound levels produced by various activities and sources. This is a, it's a two-page chart and you can indicate, it indicates, you know, where the noise level standards or the sound, the sound limits set by the proposed ordinance, you know, are relative to certain sounds. For example, the construction, the proposed ordinance would set a maximum sound level limit for construction activities in commercial and industrial zones between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM at 85 decibels. That sound is comparable to the sound of a heavy truck traveling at 40 miles per hour as measured from 50 feet away from the truck. So that, that's what that chart is trying to get to you because I know in a vacuum, 85 decibels, unless you're an acoustical engineer, it's hard to figure out exactly what that is and put it into perspective.
Mr. Tucker, I would say whether your trunk lids vibrate or not when it gets to 135 decibels, it's time to turn it down.
Yes.
But the, my question would be, how many decimal meters does the city currently have? Who has them and has there been any training done? Because I know that this will give us substantial teeth to the ordinance. It's a tremendous improvement, I think, over what we had written.
My understanding is that the police department has the only... My, my understanding is that the, the police department has the only noise level meter or sound measurement meter. And my, also, my understanding is that there have been three police officers trained to use that meter. This, I can, I can assure you that I looked at the technical specifications of that meter, which is a very sophisticated meter, and made sure that it was capable of doing the types of measurements that are set forth in this ordinance. And so, and in fact, it is, could even do more sophisticated analyses than what would be required under this, this ordinance. Whether one meter in the police department is sufficient for purposes of, you know, for enforcement purposes, I don't know.
And that would be my question. I think the law enforcement's probably going to use it for motorcycles and radios and stereos and that type of equipment. But for the neighborhood construction and stuff like that, if someone responds, is, would that, would we potentially need an additional one maybe in the, who would be doing the enforcement on that, I guess?
Typically, the police department would be sent out, even though it wouldn't be a motor vehicle out to a, a construction site to determine if there was a violation.
If I might also respond is that with respect to construction, the, the police department and the Buildings and Codes Department would share enforcement responsibilities. Obviously, the Building and Codes Department is not here between 4:30 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. the following day. So if there was construction going on during that period that appeared to be violating the noise ordinance, the police would be, respond to, to that complaint. However, if it was something that occurred during normal working hours, it would be something that either the Building and Codes Department could respond to, or the police department could respond to. Though, for purposes of sound measurement, there is currently not a codes official who is trained in operating a meter, so that would be someone who would need to, they would need to identify someone to get that certification.
And that would be my point. If we're going to have codes enforcement, then, then we certainly need someone in codes trained to do it.
Yes.
That's my whole point.
And Mr. Smitherman, on other occasions where a complaint has come initially to, in one instance, to the Planning Department and another to the Building and Codes Department, those staff members involved, the police officers with the device and who were trained to sort of measure, so the departments were able to work collaboratively to try and get the test done.
So, as I was reading through this last night, there's a couple of things that struck me. I guess first is something that you just mentioned too. You know, I was trying to read through the summary, you know, this is a lot of information that we got yesterday and trying to, you know, decode what it used to look like and what it looks like now and what specific changes were actually made. You know, something that, you know, frankly, just my personal opinion, I don't really like the sound of the, has been prepared with an eye to the future and to accommodate population and economic growth. What that sounds like to me is that we made it more noisy. Is that, have we increased the limits?
No, I don't, I don't think, I don't think that would be, I can understand why you would read it that way, but I don't think that's an accurate interpretation. The, the sound level limits are, let me take a step back. In the current noise ordinance, there are sound level limits that are established using this more complex sound measurement technique called octave band measurements. And it, just very briefly, what it requires is measuring the, the sound level of various frequencies and what, what-
Oh, I knew that.
I did not understand this before I started looking into it. But the, 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 the new sound level limits use something that is a simplified weighting of sound across those frequencies in a way that approximates the way sound is perceived by the human ear. What the, the sound level, the general exterior sound level limits that exist in this ordinance are comparable-
Okay.
-to the, the octave band measurements, where it's not, I mean, if, there might, an acoustical engineer might tell you that there's, you know, a couple of decibel differences, but it's not a big increase. I, I will say that the, there is an existing exemption, as I mentioned, for construction activities on private property. And the way that is currently phrased right now does not have any specific decibel limits on it. It is, instead, it relates just to construction within 500 feet of an occupied residence and sets forth time periods in which that activity is permitted and not permitted. What these, what the construction, maximum noise limits applicable to construction that are set forth in the, in the proposed ordinance, not only, they contain those same time limitations, but they also set a maximum noise limit, which while above the generally applicable noise limit, are something that did not exist in the current ordinance. Those construction noise limits are consistent with those adopted by other municipalities across the country, large and small.
Okay. That's good. I mean, I just wanted to kind of make sure that's not what that meant. A couple of little things here that I saw under the exemptions. It was, it exempted schools that had some athletic events, and it listed something about cultural activities at schools.
Yes.
I don't guess I really know what that means typically. What would that, I mean, is there some example of?
I would think specifically what, what you're referring to there is athletical, musical, and cultural activities or events located or sponsored, conducted by any public or private school. What that, what that does is it allows, the way that the time limit is, the noise limits right now, let me take a, sorry, take a step back. The generally applicable daytime noise limits in the proposed ordinance run from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. What this exemption does is extend that an hour for athletic, musical, and cultural events, such as a high school football game, or if there was an outdoor concert at a school-
Concert, okay, yeah.
-to extend that for an additional hour, just in case the football game went into overtime, or they, there were three encores at the, at the concert.
Yeah. The only other thing that I saw was on, on MTSU, the stuff that we give them an exemption for basically says, I mean, do we have to give them a full exemption? Okay.
That's, it's just, it's outside our jurisdiction. I just need to make that clear.
Very good.
And for, and just as a comparable one would be the exemption for, for airplanes, is that, that is something that's governed by the FAA, and so it's outside our jurisdiction.
Good questions. Where would three kids fall in this, in a house?
Well, do you know, there's actually an exemption. How old are your kids?
They're under 12.
If they're under 12-
They're good.
Then you're, then you're good.
I would characterize them on the category as uncomfortably loud.
You could have the police department come out and measure them to confirm that.
Any other questions?
Here and none, I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Smitherman, Mr. Young. Ms. Wright will call the rule.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smitherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Now, new business, conduct a public hearing and consider for approval a certificate of compliance for Nigambia S. Patel, Gina G. Patel, and Vupal A. Patel at University Package Wine and Liquor Warehouse, 2834 Middle Tennessee Boulevard. Ms. Wright?
Mayor, this is an ownership change for an existing store, so it is required that we have a public hearing when it is an ownership change. The background checks do meet our, our requirements.
Okay. Any questions? I want to read the rules for a public hearing. We'll ask you to come to the podium, state your name and address. Ask you to speak no more than three minutes unless you're the spokesperson for a group. Please address all comments to the city council. At the end of the hearing, we'll attempt to address all comments, and each person will be allowed to speak only once. Okay. We'll open the public hearing for this request. Anyone wishing to speak? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and consider this recommendation.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright will call the rule.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smitherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Pursuant to Resolution 14OZR46 adopted by the city council on September 11th, 2014, conduct a, conduct a public hearing to consider amending the conditions applicable to approximately 1.56 acres in the planned residential development district located along Middle Tennessee Boulevard at Vine Street. Mr. Dave McGowan, on behalf of Regent Development, applicant 2014-425, notice of said public hearing was published in the September 29th, 2014 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. Our second public hearing this evening is coming to you from the recommendation of the Planning Commission. It's for you to consider amending an existing zone for property that's approximately 1.56 acres. This property is currently zoned PRD, and that stands for Planned Residential District. It's the area that's shaded orange on the map that's before you. You see, this property is located along Middle Tennessee Boulevard, and East Vine Street runs between the properties. It is located north of Frisco Street and also south of East Main Street. This property was zoned PRD in 2008 to allow the development of town home development. Just to the north, you can see there's this property that's zoned PCD, that's Planned Commercial District, and that was to allow the development of a commercial portion of the development. If you're familiar with the Boulevard Restaurant, that is located within the PCD portion. This zoning amendment applies only to the PRD portion of this property, the part that allows this condominium-style townhomes. The applicants wish to make some changes to the architecture, which are significant enough that require it to go back through the zoning change process. The structures that were originally approved were very nice-looking, and the ones that are being, being proposed are nice-looking as well. However, they're proposing to increase the height from two stories to three stories. And they're also proposing to change the footprint, so the footprint of the buildings themselves are smaller, but the total footprint of the unit will be larger because it'll be three stories. So the minimum size of the dwelling units from the previously approved plan is 968 square feet, and if you approve this amendment, the minimum size will be 1,500 square feet. They also would like to replace what was previously proposed as a deck, and they'd like to use a balcony in lieu of the deck, and the balcony is an architectural feature, and they call it a Juliet balcony. The proposed height of three stories would be consistent to what we would ordinarily see in any other multifamily residential zone, so it is not out of context with multifamily zones. Mr. Matt Taylor's here this evening, and I'll invite him to the lectern to present some additional information regarding this zoning change request. You have been provided some additional information in your packet, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Six members of the Planning Commission were present the evening of the public hearing, and all six members are recommending to you that you do amend the PRD.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Mayor McFarland, members of the planning, city council. I don't have a formal presentation. I think that you should have a couple of handouts showing the proposed building elevations versus what's currently approved. Architecture style is very similar in nature. We're essentially just narrowing these units up by about a foot and increasing the height by one story. This came about as the applicants started to look at the market and realized they needed more usable square footage inside of these units. What they had proposed before was a two-story unit, and that really just provided one usable level, which would be the second story. Here, they'll at least have two stories and meet their target market a little better. I think they'll still be very attractive buildings and still, and help promote the streetscape, but the Boulevard has started already for us right there at the corner. I'll be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Matt? Can I ask you a question? I'm sorry, bud. Tried to catch you. I noticed in the notes somewhere that there was a, the comment at the, at the Planning Commission, there was a parking issue that somehow was going to get addressed.
Yes, we've actually have a separate application that's trailing behind this one by about a month. I think we just had our Planning Commission public hearing earlier this month, and is, should be on the agenda tonight to get scheduled with you guys. We're adding about 12, 11 or 12 parking spaces. Currently, right now, if you go out there on a very busy night, the patrons of the Boulevard specifically will park in the townhome pads where there, where there's no parking right now. So we're going to replace some of those townhome pads temporarily, we hope, with some formal parking to try to help alleviate that situation.
All right. Awesome.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the mic. All right. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Consider for passage on first reading, ordinance 14OZR46, amending an area in the PRD along Middle Tennessee Boulevard at Vine Street.
So moved. Second.
Mr. LaLance. Mr. Smitherman. Ms. Wright will call the rule.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smitherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Pursuant to Resolution 14OZR47 adopted by the city council on September 11th, 2014, will conduct a public hearing to consider amending the conditions applicable to approximately 56.13 acres in the planned residential development district located south of Salem Highway and west of Casey Lane. Mr. Rob Haney, on behalf of AR Nashville LLC Terranova, applicant 2006403, notice of said public hearing was published in the September 29th, 2014 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. My next public hearing is for amendments in existing PRD that's located south of Casey, or along Casey Lane and south of New Salem Highway. This property's shaded orange on the map before you, and you can see that it currently is just past the first roundabout and within the Three Rivers Development. It's identified as a stone bridge development, and it's a planned development that was approved to allow, in 2006, to allow an active adult community for folks who are 55 years of age and older. The development was started by the previous property owners, however, the development did slow down or virtually stop, and the current property owners acquired the property, I believe, two years ago. They have submitted a letter and a, and a program book proposing some changes to the existing PRD, the Planned Residential District. Of course, to make those changes, the planning director determined that it would be something that would require going through the zoning change process, not something that can be approved administratively. There are several small changes that incrementally add up to a significant change from the previously approved plans. The changes, in large part, will deal with the architecture of the structures. The, they're proposing to eliminate the door that's located along the front of the structure that faces the private streets. This development does have private streets, not public streets. They want to relocate that door so that it's closer to where the parking is. Most of the units in this development are four-family or quads, so there are four residents attached to that. They also would like to change the architectural style. This plan that was previously approved was a part of a copyrighted design package, and it proposed a European country-style home, and what's being proposed differs somewhat from what was proposed, or differs significantly from what was approved in that program book. And I'll pull an image on the screen now. You can see the proposed buildings use more hardy plank and less of the stone that was originally approved. Staff did spend considerable time evaluating the request and did advise the applicant that he would need to come to the Planning Commission City Council to be able to make these changes to the structure. The representative of the applicant, Mr. Rob Haney, is here this evening, and I'll invite him up to the lectern in just a moment to go through these changes. And if you have any questions about the application, I'd be glad to answer them. The night of this public hearing, we did have six members present, and they all did unanimously vote that this PRD amendment be approved. The, the applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting as well for those who live within this development, as there was some inform- as there was some information maybe that was circulating that wasn't quite accurate, and so they've attempted to try to correct that information. The overall scope of the plan, so the number of units, is not changing, but mostly it has to do with the design of the units. So, I'll go ahead and invite Mr. Haney to the lecturn. If you have any questions, of course, I'll come back up.
Hello, and thank you for having me this evening. We were very fortunate a couple of years ago to be able to purchase this development, which was in foreclosure. It had been partially developed, about 20% with homeowners there in a neighborhood that was really in flux. We were able to restart this community, which is 55 and older community with a lot of great existing homeowners, and since we've started and built nearly 32 homes in the last year and a half, we've continued to grow this community and look forward to completing it. We're thankful to be able to be in front of you today and discuss some very minor changes that I'll review. As was mentioned, the fourplex design stays very, very similar with what was originally approved. The number of homes within the community, the parking, the access, the exterior materials used, siding and stone, we're asking for no variation in what was previously approved. We've had numerous community meetings, and the homeowners have adopted and approved what we have submitted to you. And most specifically, we're repositioning the front door locations, which were previously on the roadway, to a section that is closer to the driveway for each home. As our homeowners are slightly older, the walking distance from where they would park around the front of each building to the front door is much longer than it currently is as designed and submitted to you. The second modification is just to the floor plans themselves. The, again, the structure and the finished materials stay the same. However, our interior designs have been modified to meet the demands of the current marketplace. It's necessary to amend this brochure, informational brochure, for the following reasons. Again, as mentioned, repositioning the front doors for added security and safety of the residents. Second reason would be additional modifications made to these floor plans as controlled by copyright law. We need to adjust our plans away from the previous developers' plans, which we're doing. And, of course, we want to respond to current market trends. Happy to answer any questions you may have, and again, thank you for letting me be in front of you tonight.
Any questions, Ms. Wright?
I do. Imagine that. The first thing I want to address is, I happen to read back through the Planning Commission meeting minutes, and it's given sort of six or eight bullet points that you had given during that meeting, the last of which says, "The percentages of the exterior building materials, stone, hardy board siding, type of windows, et cetera, will all stay the same." But in my notes and information from the Planning Commission, it looks like those percentages are changing. Is that correct, or is it not?
I don't think that bullet point is correct. The exterior materials that are being used certainly all stays the same as far as the materials for siding, the hardy plank, as well as the stone that's being used on the exterior. Also, the colors and window styles and types all stay the same. The percentages are actually different. Some of the original buildings had about 25% stone and 75% siding, while other materials were 75% stone and 25% siding. We're kind of in the middle. We're about 38% stone and the remainder siding.
And is it all hardy board? Or is it vinyl?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, there's no vinyl. We have clad windows, hardy board, plank siding, and stone combination.
So, Doug, on the Planning Commission, your understanding on this would have been that the percentages were changing? That this is just a typo on here, probably? Or did you expect them to be the same?
I don't remember that point, but there are some points that struck me to be very positive with this particular proposal, is that the homeowners' association meeting was very positive about that. When the neighbors that live there are very positive about the changes that are taking place in their existing development, go a long way. Another positive change, it seems like it's minor, but it's really not, is moving the front doors to make the distance from the driveway less for the development, the people that live in the development, since this is an age-oriented community, not having to walk as far from their driveways to their units. So, the number of units aren't changing either. So, those are very positive points.
Yeah, I saw them. I just didn't like, I just didn't know the inconsistency and want to make sure I knew what we were getting. Yeah.
Councilman Lance, we made it clear that the percentages were going to change. And there's also a letter from Mr. Adalot that outlines very specifically, and it's the third page, that is definitely a change. They are changing the percentage.
I saw that.
I believe that Mr. Haney, what the minutes were quoting him, and he was trying to express that the palette was staying the same, but the way he expressed it made it sound like he was saying the materials weren't staying the same. The staff and the Plan Development Program Book clearly say that they are changing.
Yeah, I saw it in the book.
I think he just misspoke and was quoted because he misspoke, so.
Fair enough.
Okay. All right. We'll open the public hearing and consider this proposal. If you wish, anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. We'll close the public hearing. Consider for passage on first reading, ordinance 14OZ47, to amend an area in the PRD south of Salem Highway and west of Casey Lane.
Mr. Mayor, move for passage on first reading. Second.
Ms. Young, Mr. LaLance, Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Item eight, pursuant to Resolution 14OZR48 adopted by the city council on September 11th, 2014, conduct a public hearing to consider amending the conditions applicable to approximately 19.53 acres in the planned unit development district located along Fortress Boulevard at Pocket Creek Crossing. Mr. Matt Taylor, on behalf of DR Horton, Inc., applicant 2013446, notice of said public hearing was published in the September 29th, 2014 issue of a local newspaper.
Thank you, sir. Our third and final public hearing this evening coming to you from the Planning Commission is for you to consider yet another plan development amendment. This is actually for property that is zoned PUD, and that's Planned Unit District, and it's for property that's located along the west side of Fortress Boulevard, both north and south of Pocket Creek Crossing and along Manson Crossing Drive. You can see the property outlined in, or shaded blue on the map that's before you. This property was approved, it's a PUD, or an amendment to this PUD was approved earlier this year. That changed the plan from having 373-unit townhome condominiums to a development with 70 townhome units and 38 60-foot-wide single-family detached lots and 44, 51-foot-wide single-family detached lots. So, you may remember that it was entirely a multifamily development, which they rezoned, asked for you to rezone, and you approved to allow also single-family homes. The change that's coming to you tonight is to consider only the single-family portion of this development. The 70 townhome units will not change, but they're asking to change the lot width allowed within a single-family development. Currently, the plan that is approved would allow 82 lots with a mixture of lots that are 60 feet wide or 51 feet wide. They want the change to allow all the lots to be a minimum of 51 feet wide. They are working with some existing infrastructure and streets that are located here. Development began, utilities were put in the ground, and there was some work that began before the recession, and the previous property owner, I think, lost possession of the property. When working on the plans, they realized that they needed to make some small changes, but of course, staff would not allow any of these lots that were identified to be 61 feet wide to be any less. So, they needed to come back to you through this legislative process because it is a planned development and ask for you to approve that change. If you do approve the change, to allow all the single-family lots to have a minimum size of 51 feet wide, and that will increase the overall lots by two. So, currently, 82 lots are approved. If you approve this change, then 84 lots could be developed. It's not a high number, but it is something that would, of course, require your approval. There is additional information in your package if you'd like to look through that. I'm available for questions. All six members of the Planning Commission do recommend that you amend this plan development, and I'll invite, again, Mr. Matt Taylor to the lecturn to provide any additional information for this request.
Good evening again. As Ms. Green said, we are looking to add an additional two units back. That still presents a significant decrease in the original zoning and density out here that was previously approved for almost 400 townhomes, and we're not looking to change architecture. The developer and builder, DR Horton, just changed their home offerings and did not need the wider lots any longer. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? Ms. LaLance?
Wait till the next item.
All right, we'll open the public hearing and consider this, the ordinance before you. Anyone? We'll close the public hearing and consider for passage on first reading, ordinance 14OZ48, to amend an area in the PUD located along Fortress Boulevard at Pocket Creek Crossing.
Move for approval.
Second. Mr. Smotherman. Mr. Washington. Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll consider recommendations of the Planning Commission to schedule public hearings to consider an annexation petition along Blackman Road, zoning application CF and CH along Blackman Road simultaneous with annexation, and PCD and PR amendment along Middle Tennessee Boulevard and East Main Street. Ms. Adalot.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm Mr. Council. During this government meeting, our public first of 2014, the Planning Commission conducted public hearings on the items that you just read into the record. After the public hearings, the Planning Commission discussed these matters and then recommended their approval. The council needs to schedule public hearings on these items.
Okay. Ms. McGannan?
Mayor, even though the city manager will be absent, I'm recommending November 13th to you.
That doesn't sound fair.
Well, the assistant city manager deserves some fun.
Okay. Okay.
I would, I would point out that Veterans Day will be that week, and so that will make things a bit choppy for staff getting everything in on Monday and out as opposed to Tuesday.
Then why don't we back it up?
November is a difficult month for meetings. We've got Veterans Day, National Cities, and Thanksgiving.
What date was that, Ms. McGannan?
November 13th.
Maybe set a public hearing for November 13th.
Second.
Ms. Wright, we'll call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Adalot. We'll consider for adoption Resolution 14R26, establishing a tennis committee for oversight of the city's new indoor tennis facility. Mr. Lance?
Mayor, members of city council, the resolution before you would create a new committee called the Tennis Committee. We are looking for them to help us with the tennis complex, which is currently under construction at Old Ford Park. As you know, this is a partnership with MTSU, Christie Houston. Local community members in the city have all provided funding for the tennis complex. And while we are extremely talented in the area of recreation, you know, tennis is something of a brand-new sport for us in terms of an indoor facility. So, we thought we would take advantage of expertise in the community to set up a tennis commission. We would have them help us as we go through the construction process, recommendations in the selection of operations coordinator, head tennis professional, and consultants to the city manager, rules, regulations, and fees. For those of you who have served on the golf commission in the past, you know we've got to set greens fees, and so with the indoor tennis facility, we'll need to establish fees for use of it, and then to help recommend an annual budget for us. We are proposing a five-member commission, one member from the city council, one from MTSU, one from the Parks and Rec Commission, one from the Murfreesboro Tennis Association, and one citizen. These would be appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council.
Okay.
Now, Mayor, I know with, you know, many of you may think about this like you do the golf commission. I would point out that the golf commission has its own director, the golf director, Mr. Wilkins, its own standalone budget, which then comes to the city manager and then on to you when we look at budget. The tennis personnel would be city of Murfreesboro Parks and Rec employees. So, thinking that, you know, this group would work with the Parks and Rec Commission and the Parks and Rec Director, it may not be explicit in here, but did want to make sure that that was what you anticipated.
So, in other words, the chain of command, the tennis committee would report to the Parks and Recreation Department. Parks and Recreation Department would then report to the city.
Parks and Rec Director and Parks and Rec Commission, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this, I think this will be real helpful, and the one thing that I had a question about, and this is just from a standpoint of the city looking at this on a, on a kind of more perpetual basis. The Murfreesboro Tennis Association is an important piece of the puzzle as it relates to the tennis community here, and they've done a lot of work with, with the city and MTSU and everybody to get this thing running. I am questioning whether or not, and I really would, I think I would take it so far as to suggest that we might not be so specific in our five-member list here to always have to have one of those folks. I mean, I think it is certainly appropriate, but the mayor would be able to choose that. But I think to put that in there as a perpetual thing that we always have to do that, I mean, just, there's all kinds of examples why three years, five years, eight years, 10 years down the road, it might not be the best thing to do to have, to have our hands kind of tied, to have to have somebody there. I mean, just for instance, if they, you know, they connect or merge with the Nashville Tennis Association, then all of a sudden, we got to go in and amend the resolution and do all, you know, decide what we want to do. So, my suggestion would be, or my discussion with you guys would just be, maybe we, you know, back that part out, let the mayor take care of that from a standpoint of making the, I guess the mayor is the one who appoints, yeah, and then we approve, that that would be a good choice now, especially the first three years of this process.
One thought, perhaps, to kind of follow what you're saying, Mr. Lance, might be to have that as two residents and leave the other seats slotted typically on our boards and commissions. We've got a council representative.
Yeah.
MTSU has got a significant financial commitment as well as their home court for their tennis program, and then, you know, someone from, you know, the Parks and Rec Commission. So, we were trying to figure out and be consistent with why we had it. I understand your point that, you know, the tennis community may change and the name may change, but we changed that to two residents with that.
I think that does it, yeah. I mean, I think that's a smart thing to do, and I, I mean, I think it's a good idea to have somebody from Murfreesboro Tennis on there. I mean, I don't want to tell the mayor what, you know, he's going to do, but, I mean, as far as us appointing it, I think that is a great idea because they're so involved and so important, but, you know, things change over time, and this is more perpetual, so I just thought we might back that out.
So, is that a motion to approve it, provided that the reference to Murfreesboro Tennis Association member is deleted and one is changed to two?
It is. Yes. So moved. Thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Wright? Ms. Wright, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Ms. McGinnan, how long would it be before this, are we on a resolution like this?
We can appoint tomorrow.
Okay. I have a good idea who I think would be a great council member to be on the tennis commission, not to mention any names, Rick LaLance.
Is that a form of a motion?
All right. Oh, mercy. We'll move into beer permits.
You align.
Yes, Mayor, we have two tonight. Neither location has finished their building codes inspection, so this is for us to be a little ahead where, when they get that done, we can issue the permit. One is a market at 2002 East Main Street. That's an ownership change. And the other is a market at 2414 East Main Street, which is a name change and an ownership change. The background checks on both of these meet our requirements, and I recommend approval.
Move for approval.
Second. Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Do we have a list of statements that are ready to be paid in front of you?
Mayor, I move to pay the bill.
Second. All right, Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
I have no board and commission appointments except the one that will be appointed tomorrow. And other business from staff or city council, we do have item B that was pulled off the consent agenda, the third amendment to the contract with American Traffic Solutions Incorporated. Mr. Smotherman?
Mayor, the reason I requested this to be pulled off is because I'm certainly not going to open up the debate as to whether or not the constitutionality of traffic light cameras or any of that, we won't go there. But I do feel that we have not resolved the issue in the fairness of requiring people to pay the ticket. And I still have a problem with the fairness of issuing tickets that we basically have no ability to force a person to pay. And the tickets cannot be, they can't go against their credit rating, it can't go against their driving record, there's nothing that would allow this ticket to be paid and for us to continue to send out tickets and for the, and certainly, I don't encourage anybody to run a red light, don't do it. But for those who, I think it's unfair for us to continue to send out tickets to people who are simply deciding whether or not they want to pay the ticket. And for those who are honest enough and fair enough to pay the tickets, I say thank you, but to those who, I think we're rewarding those who are still continuing their misbehavior of not only running lights but refusing to pay the ticket, and I just don't think that's fair to those who are paying the ticket, so.
Can I piggyback on that just a second?
Absolutely.
I had a call on the WGNS the other day that I did not know the answer to, so this is a, imagine that. To piggyback on that, though, the question was, if that is the case, if it is the case that they can't send it to collections, or if it can't be sent to collections or if it can't go on your driving record, should they be able to put that on the ticket that they can send you to collections and their driving records? Can you clarify all this for me?
What we can't do is send it to, have it affect their credit rating. We can't send it for that purpose. We could sue to collect. It doesn't make economic sense to do that for an individual ticket.
We have the ability to sue for collections, but we do not send any information to the credit bureau.
Correct.
What about the driving record? Is there any type of?
State law, in the same way that they took away the ability to send it to the credit rating has it, so it doesn't go on the driving record. That's not a city option, that's a state legislature choice.
Does this company, does the ticket that they send out, does it say that it can go against your driver's record?
It does not.
Okay.
It doesn't give inaccurate information, no.
All right, well, that's what I was being asked, so, okay.
I mean, I don't think it says it doesn't count against your license. I don't think we have any obligation to do that.
Do we know approximately what the percentage is of the people that, oh, you're getting ready to do that, okay.
If you remember, this was actually back in the month of August, the question had come up then about not only how many of the citations were being paid, but if we had repeat offenders. Ms. Ordonez from the city court was kind enough to pull together the information from the inception of this particular contract, 96% of the tickets have been paid. Only 4% of those tickets are quote-unquote "repeat offenders," folks who have two or more violations. There are folks with more than two violations out there. But the program's been relatively effective in terms of not having more repeat offenders and collecting the dollars that have been signed.
Question. Mr. Crumley, if we had a whole lot, a large percentage of repeat offenders, then the program would not be working? Is that a correct assumption?
I don't know if you can go to that point from only 4% repeat offenders. I think if Chief Chrisman were here, he has very good data on the reduction in the number of accidents in intersections, not only the intersections that have cameras on them, but all intersections in the city. Over the history of this, this would be the fifth year of the contract with this particular company. And I want to think we're close to a 50% reduction in the number of side-to-side collisions and something in the 40% range on total collisions in all intersections in the city, not just the camera intersection.
Which is even more impressive when you consider the fact that the community has continued to grow during that five-year timeframe, more drivers but fewer crashes.
Is there something that we can do proactively for those that are repeat offenders that we can, I know that we can't legally do anything, but is there anything we could send them to say, hey, you've run four red lights this year? Just wanted you to know.
If you go back five years ago to when city council renegotiated the contract with this particular company, ATS, our choices at that point in time, your old direction to the staff at that point in time was to, A, take us out of the revenue business, where there's no windfall of money to the city from any of these citations. Because of taking the money out, we basically charged the company with full collections, full enforcement. The only activities that Murphysboro Police are involved with is the officers who review the photo evidence on each and every proposed citation coming from the company. Beyond that, I'm not sure that we're actually doing any further work towards contacting anyone who's received a red light citation.
Do we receive enough money to pay for that person or those people to sit there and review all those?
I have not yet looked at fiscal year 2014. In fiscal year 2013, the payments to the company and the revenues, the city netted about $125,000.
You know, Mr. Crumley, I think something you didn't mention, whether you're for or against red light cameras, you know, the state started the hashtag "move over" campaign last year, and when I talk to police officers, when you talk about red light cameras, the one thing that they do tell me is, thank you for keeping me off the side of the road on a busy intersection. And I think that's something we do have to look at, so. But, sorry, Mr. Smotherman?
Any other questions, guys?
I'm simply not going to turn it into a red light camera debate. So, you know, I just simply say that as long as we don't have the ability to enforce it fairly to all people, then I think we're doing a disservice by continuing the program. And I'll stop at that.
All right, you have this extension in front of you.
Did you say that, would you guys, I mean, I think there's a part of the debate that's out there and part of it would help me a little bit, not necessarily, I mean, I hear what he's saying, that certainly resonates with me. I also want to kind of get some information for my own good, which would be the information that Chief Chrisman might have. You know, I don't know that I've ever really seen, you know, I know the recidivism rate, I think that certainly bodes well towards less people running red lights. The next thing would be that we're having, that there is more safety, that there is a safety component to this, and if I could get that, I think I'd feel more comfortable with whichever way I wanted to vote on this to make sure I had that. I mean, is that something we can?
We've got time. If you wanted to defer this to your next meeting, that's not going to be problematic to the existing contract if that's the way you should.
Are we going to do three readings on this?
Contracts at one approval, but we would have time if the council wanted to. I'll push this. November 1st?
Chief, yeah, we have time.
Will you guys be okay, at least give me, and I can just bow out?
No, we all can review it. We can all review it.
Is that something we could do, just then put it on our agenda for the next time?
We'll bring it back to you, your next meeting.
All right, that'd be helpful to me, thanks.
We'll put that on the regular agenda.
Do we need a motion to defer this, Ms. McGinnan, or just?
It was all.
Yeah, we took it off. Move for deferral.
Second. All right, Ms. Wright, go call the roll.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
I've got one item for you under other business, and it is a request to add a position called turf manager to the Parks and Rec Department. We know that last winter was extremely cold, and many of the sports complexes in Middle Tennessee had turf loss, including Murphysboro. The Siegel Soccer Complex experienced a 60% turf loss. Since that time, we've seeded, fertilized, sprigged, and sodded.
Have you watered?
We've watered, too. Not so much this week. And part of our short-term plan to address the situation there was Joel Beckham from the Old Fort Golf Course was able to go over to Siegel Soccer Park. And while we've got a very talented staff there, Joel was able to help them deal with some drainage aeration and thatch issues. And I think Joel's expertise in turf certainly was something that was beneficial to our entire team. And that really led us to maybe what we thought is a midterm solution, and that was to bring a turf manager to the Parks and Rec Department. Parks and Rec actually has three times more turf than Old Fort Golf Course, and while Mr. Beckham is very talented, that would stretch him considerably thin. So it is our recommendation to add this position. And looking at salaries, we believe the salary range for this position would go from the low $42,000s to topping out around $62,000. We would recommend that in next year's budget, we'd include the position for the full year at about $65,000. So that means if we add the position right now, we're asking for another $33,000 in the Parks and Rec budget. We hope we can fit that in under his existing budget. We're not asking for new money. If there's savings, we'd like to use those. If there's not, then we would use our unforeseen budget to help us with that. But we really think this will help us and our team at Parks and Rec continue to keep the fields in good shape. Certainly, the economic impact and benefit to the community for our soccer fields is outstanding and significant. We think this additional expertise will be useful, so it is our recommendation.
Mr. Lyons, this person, though, will not just do soccer, though, right? They'll do?
Yes, turf, and they'll report directly to the Parks and Rec Director, so good, thank you for clarifying that, Mayor.
So he's going to be like a turf specialist for baseball and soccer and any other fields that have grass on them?
Yes, sir.
And would it be, you know, appropriate to think, I mean, I have this in my mind, is that this might also open the door for us to take some of our current green space that's not really worthy to go out there and, you know, to really have real games on, you know, due to the, you know, whatever he might, this person might be able to turn existing?
Pick up some extra space. Marginal practice fields to better practice.
Yeah, so. Yep. More questions? Move, are we approving?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in, I'm sorry, Ms. Wright? I just bypassed you, Ms. Wright, I'm sorry.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons, I do think it would be a good information. I think many of our leagues will be excited to know that this is happening. I think it would be good to do some kind of, yeah, press release or even an e-blast out to these different leagues to let them know that we've identified what we felt like an opportunity to improve, and this is how we're doing that.
Great suggestion, thank you.
All right, do we have any other business?
I do, Mayor.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Mayor and members of the council, as we all know, it is time for our evaluation of Mr. Lyons, and we've all met our deadline and we've turned in our forms. I think it would be good this year if we asked Mr. Lyons to also complete the same evaluation that we completed, so not only will he see what we think about his performance, but we can also see how he feels he's performing. What do you all think about that?
So are you implying that he's going to tell us what areas he thinks he needs improvement? Is that what you're saying, or?
And are where he thinks he's doing an excellent job.
And where his strengths are?
Mm-hmm.
Great idea.
Would you be open to that?
That's another great suggestion. Glad to.
Okay, when will we, like, when is our meeting that we're going to meet?
2017.
2017. So when would we ask Mr. Lyons to let us see his performance?
I think, Ms. Gels Harris, if it'd be okay, if we could get it by the 24th, which would give us the weekend to review that?
That'd be okay with you?
Absolutely.
That'd be fine.
Well, since you don't do it that way, a lot of corporations, Rob, also, I would suggest you also list your goals, you already do it in a way, in an evaluation form, your goals for the next year. So that way, we can look back and say, well, did you meet those, your own goals? Did you meet your own goals also for the next year?
I asked for that three years in a row.
Yeah, we've started, you know, I think, a conversation the council did about revising the evaluation tool for the city manager and having that goal-based approach, Mr. Washington, I think was part of that direction. And, you know, I guess for clarification, do you want me to try to do something now, or do you want to fold that into the new tool that would be developed?
I think it may would be good on the other comment section that you have, the back section, maybe just a list, you know, hey, these are my top 10 things, I don't know that you can say top 10, but maybe just give us an overview of what you're doing. But also, I do think, I hate to ask him to recreate the will because we are getting ready to redo the whole thing. So I think we're all going to get lots of input to be able to decide how we want this new evaluation to look, so.
Just do like we did, just answer the questions, and then it's a page on the back if you'd like to put in additional comments.
Sure. How great the council members are, things like that would be.
Who's your favorite council member and why, you know? Who do you hate and why? What council member you like the best, which one you don't, you know? One to 10, you know?
Row.
I know I'm going to be it, I know, I know.
Two last things, if we don't have any other business. Wanted to recognize Mr. King, who's here representing the school board. I should have done that at the first of the meeting, but thank you, State, for the entire meeting. So thank you for your service and appreciate how you're working together with all of us. And then, Mr. Washington had a good point to bring up where we talk about the 10 achieves, that the deadline for our Rutherford County students is November 1st. So we need to, all of us get out to as many high school students as we can through social media, whatever we have, that that deadline is November 1st, and once you pass that deadline, that's, you're ineligible.
Until the next year.
Until the next year. And there was a great comment that the governor made, that a child or a kid who's getting ready to graduate ready to graduate high school, their parents had never gone. This kid scored a 35 on his ACT and was not going to go to college until someone from the program reached out. So I think that's something that we all can take on to see if we can urge some individuals to sign up. That's www.tnachieves.org.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Any other new business or any other business? All right, we'll stand adjourned.